Well, actually, it's an old tradition, especially back at the RRWA. Mr. Rogers may remember, we had a board member from Mendocino, who would often bring his dog along, a sweet little dog, um, older dog. She wouldn't know she was there till all of a sudden midway in the meeting, she decided to jump up on his lap, peek around for a minute, go look at us, and then just circle around, go to sleep, and that was it. Very good company. All right, we are at six o'clock. Let me check with staff. Are we ready to get started tonight?
What have you done to staff, Mayor?
It must be this baleful glare that I have. I must have scared them off. I don't know. Uh, I'll wait just a second. I do see we have Mr. Barker here, but I don't know if he can run the AV for us.
I'm ready, bud.
And there's Mr. Obid, so I think we're gonna get where we need to go.
Yeah, hey, um, yeah, Mayor, if we can wait just one minute, we're still, we're gonna put a kinks.
So we can wait a couple of minutes. Let us know when you're ready to go.
Yeah, I think we're almost there. Thanks.
Thank you.
I like the kinks. I've seen it a couple times.
Yeah, I went to a concert there once.
How is it down there at the bridge, John?
It's, it's not bad. It's a little cooler.
It's a little windy, I would imagine, this afternoon.
Thirty, thirty mile an hour gusts, I think they said.
So, um, Mayor, is there a reason that Mr. Scott is sitting out in the attendees?
I thought he might be in trouble for something. I'm not sure.
Alrighty then.
But I'll bet it's probably just something we need to bring in. I think I'm gonna let staff get everything set on their end, and then we can see if we have anybody else we need to bring in and upgrade to a pianist.
Maybe Mr. Scott's in timeout.
And I'll just repeat for anybody who's just joined us, uh, we're delaying starting just for a couple of minutes. We have a few technical difficulties that we're working our way through, and we hope to get started shortly.
Our deputy clerk is down in Riverside, so Kerry Page on is handling the duties tonight.
Yes, indeed.
Mayor Landman? Mayor Landman?
Yes. We can hear you.
We are ready to go here when you are ready.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, everybody. With that, let me welcome everybody here tonight to our regular joint meeting of the Katari City Council and the successor agency to the former Katari Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. And we're gonna jump right to our roll call, and I'll ask our acting city clerk for the night if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
And here, thank you. And I'll take a break, as I usually do, for just a second, and ask the city manager, be kind enough to introduce the staff that are here to work with us tonight.
The mayor, members of the council, obviously, myself, Stami Obid, city manager. Also, with us tonight have Noah House, our community development director, Michael Parrish, our chief of police. We have John Barker, our city attorney here, Angela Quarter, our director of administrative services, and Kerry Bohan, emceeing the event tonight. And then lastly, as a participant currently, actually, Kerry, if you could promote him, is Craig Scott, our pillowbox director, seditioner. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Obid, and thank you, Ms. Bohan, for stepping up to help emcee this for us. We appreciate it. So this brings us to item three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will invite anybody who wishes to on the council, in the staff, and in the audience to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation
one nation
under God
indivisible
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 with liberty and justice for all
and justice for all.
And we could do this for years, and it'll still never go quite that smoothly. All right, nothing like trying to do synchronized speaking over the internet. But from now, we're gonna move to item four. This is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. So I'll begin first by asking my colleagues if we have any corrections or amendments to the minutes. And I'm gonna look and see if I see any hands go up. My colleague. See if anybody wishes to comment on this, because we do have an attendee.
Uh, attendee does not have public comment today.
Excellent, thank you. And with that, we'll move then uh, see if we can have a motion and a roll call vote for the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes?
Motion by Vice Mayor Harvey, and a second, I believe, from Councilmember Ford. Thank you. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. And thank you. That carries unanimously. And brings us to agenda item number five, which is announcements. Uh, so bear with me while I read a few announcements. And I'll begin by saying our new meeting orientation for uh, new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the item, on the agenda, where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. And you can see details about this on the web at katari-city.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Katari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from either the iOS or Android App Store, or alternatively by texting your zip code nine four nine three one to eight 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 seven seven seven. And finally, like always, we do love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at seven oh seven seven nine two forty six hundred or at info@katari-city.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact. It's at seven oh seven seven nine two four six one one. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact nine eleven. Uh, continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So this brings us next to item six, and we do have a proclamation tonight, a proclamation of the city council of the city of Katari proclaiming the week of September seventeenth uh, through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two as National Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week. So I do have a proclamation to read, and I believe we have a guest here to receive it while asked to share any comments he might share afterward, but first let me read this proclamation support of this. And this, as I said, is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Katari proclaiming the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two as National Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week. Whereas throughout the United States, the week starting on the third Monday of September is recognized as National Pollution Prevention Week. And whereas throughout much of California, including the Russian River Watershed, cities, counties, and other stewardship organizations are recognizing the third week of September as Creek Week. And whereas our pollution prevention practices are intrinsically linked to the health of our watershed lands and waterways. And whereas the Russian River Watershed Association supports programs to reduce pollution, increase the environmental quality of our watershed, and provide our communities with the knowledge to be effective stewards of the Russian River Watershed lands and waterways. And whereas the nearly one thousand five hundred square miles of lands, a hundred and fifty creeks, and approximately three hundred and fifty thousand residents of the Russian River Watershed are connected and mutually support each other. And whereas the Russian River, along with its tributaries and associated features, are important resources to the people of Sonoma and Mendocino County. And whereas pollution in the form of trash and debris, chemicals from industry and everyday living, and sediment from construction and many land uses and activities all have the potential to degrade the quality of life and the quality of resources within the Russian River Watershed. And whereas the Russian River Watershed Association strives to protect our lands and waterways through ongoing pollution prevention outreach, which aims to raise the awareness, the harmful effects of pollutants to our natural systems. And whereas during Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week, creek, river, and ocean cleanup campaigns will take place throughout Sonoma and Mendocino County. Therefore, be it proclaimed on this thirteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two, by the city council, the city of Katari, that the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-fourth of twenty-two is Pollution Prevention and Creek Week in the Russian River Watershed, and asks all members of our community to support efforts to protect and enrich our watershed health by participating in the many Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week activities, and to take active steps to reduce pollution and care for our environment throughout the year. So having read that, I'm gonna welcome, must be Andy Rogers from the RRW, who's here tonight, and I wonder if he might have a few words to share with us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. It's great to see you all, and, and I think, uh, starting a meeting with a watershed uh, celebration and appreciation item is a great omen for a good meeting, so. Because the city of Katari has always been a active participant, um, even before RRWA was around and uh, it started in two thousand two, two thousand three. Um, there were, they were Katari Creek Critters, uh, was active, um, as, as well as, um, all kinds of other activities, so. City of Katari's always been an active participant. This Creek Week is no uh, exception. Um, I just wanted to comment, um, I haven't even said who I am yet, so let me reverse that a little bit. I'm Andy Rogers, Executive Director of the Russian River Watershed Association, and clearly, it's been a long day. But uh, I, this is something that happens across the country. Uh, so, uh, National Pollution Prevention Week, um, and, and Creek Week used to be different weeks, the third and the fourth week of September, and they've kind of brought them together, which made a lot of sense. Um, RRWA, uh, which is the short way of saying, uh, the organization has been really involved in supporting these. And so in your packet is a flyer of the events, um, that we know of that are taking place throughout the watershed. And if anybody wanted to go to RRwatershed.org, there is a specific link for all the events that are going on, and then it links to an interactive map, which will give you directions to those. So RRwatershed.org. But I would, do want to point out particularly the Katari um, effort that's going on, uh, all week long. There's, um, an encouragement to pick up trash on the Laguna Center as a trail, um, and as well, of course, as anywhere that folks wanted to, uh, to pick up. So thank you so much for, uh, being great supporters of keeping a clean watershed and, and, um, and being a great city to, to live in.
And thank you, Mr. Rogers. And thank you for taking the time at the end of a rather long day to spend some more time with us. And I'm gonna check and see if any of the council members, in particular, RRWA representative, has anything they'd like to add to this. And if I don't see any hands go up, since this is something the public generally, or some, let's see, I see hands from the vice mayor and from Councilmember Ford. Why don't we start from Councilmember Ford first, since he's RRWA representative? And then we'll jump to the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Yes, I, I, um, the RRWA does some great work. I'm one of the newer board members representing the city on the board, and I'm quite impressed at the scope of work, what they managed to do with fairly modest resources that they, that we provide, um, as one of the members of RRWA, of our attendees is is actually planning some that aren't quite on our flyer yet, so, so maybe you'll take public comment on this event as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Uh, yes, I just had a question. Um, on the flyer, it says um, for you to bring your own bucket or trash bag, and then to bring the, to the provided trash cans at the location listed above, but it's probably just me, but I didn't see where their location was listed on the flyer. So where should we bring our trash bags? Maybe it's Andy, maybe it's Stami, and I don't know.
Uh, I'm looking at the flyer right now, but the locations are at, on the Creek at Commerce and the Creek at Park Park, the two locations, my garbage cans are stationed.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Good to share, and good data to have in the flyer. Good point. All right, well, since we have had some back and forth with the council, I am going to open this to public comment and see if we have anybody who'd like to share any more information on either of these two items that we're proclaiming for tonight.
They, uh, thank you, Mayor Landman. To attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're, if you're dialing in, use star nine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this is Jenny previously outreach coordinator of the Katari Creek Critters. It's great to see the, uh, the city of Katari taking place in and promoting the Creek Week cleanup. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say that I put out the word by email to a few friends and neighbors, um, because it's so often much easier to do this in a group with other people than to do it alone, that, um, at least some of us will be getting together at nine o'clock this Saturday, uh, just north downstream of the East Katari Avenue Bridge to start, uh, picking up trash along the section from there, uh, north downstream to Spool of Art and seeing how far we get and how much we can take. So, um, we encourage people to join us if you want to, or specifically if you live in that area. And remember to do things like bring gloves if you have them, sunscreen, hat, water, be safe, et cetera, et cetera. We have a few buckets and spare pair of gloves and things. If anyone has their own or can even lend more, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the council and see if there's any further comments or statements from anybody. I'm not seeing any hands. I will again just say it's good to see you again, Mr. Rogers. I had the great pleasure of working many years with you on the RRWA, and I'm very pleased to know that we are still very well represented for Katari through Mr. Ford's participation. So good to see you here tonight, even if it's only virtual. So with that, I'm going to thank you. And we're gonna move on next to item seven, which is the approval of the final agenda. This is another action item. Uh, and I will ask the city manager if we have any changes to the agenda tonight.
There are no proposed changes.
All right, thank you. With that, then, I've, since we do have attendees, I'm gonna ask if we have any public comment.
To attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. I recognize this is very ministerial, but nevertheless, I'm gonna ask if you could have a roll call vote for this, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. So that is approval of the final agenda for tonight, and brings us next to citizens' business. Where once again, I do have a slightly shorter paragraph I do need to read to everybody. So bear with me. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item that is not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy twenty twenty-one dash zero one, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I'm gonna open this up to citizens' business, please. And comment on consent calendar items as well.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Will proudly go ahead.
Hey, uh, this is Will Proudie here. Um, I'm just here to comment on the public hearing, uh, regarding military equipment used by the Katari Police. Is this the appropriate time to do so?
Mr. Proudie, I'm sorry, no, it isn't actually, but we're gonna be getting to that very shortly, and I'd be happy to call on you then.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, so let's bring this back for consent then. So we have four items tonight, A through D. And as always, I'll begin by asking if any of my colleagues wish to pull any items. I'm seeing some shaking hands. I'm seeing no hands go up. Uh, with that, if not, then I would look for a motion in a second.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
A second.
And a motion again, excuse me, from Vice Mayor Harvey and from Councilmember Moore. So we have a motion in a second. I wonder if we could have a roll call vote for the consent calendar, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that completes that and brings us up now to item ten, which is direction on future agenda items. So I'll stop for a second and ask my colleagues if anybody has any future agenda items they wish to propose tonight. And I'm not seeing any hands go forward with that, so thank you. That completes that. And brings us to public hearing. And this is the one you're waiting for, Mr. Proudie. Uh, this is item eleven. And this is a public hearing regarding an ordinance to approve a military equipment use policy. And I'll ask for our staff presentation on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Um, this is a continuation of the previous hearing on Assembly Bill four eighty-one, which is the, uh, military, military, uh, equipment list that has to be approved by council. During the previous hearing, there were, uh, some questions and concerns, and I wanted to address those. Um, to start with, the, the assembly bill has a long list of what they call military surplus items. Some cities literally have a hundred pages of items that they brought to their governing bodies for approval. I only have, uh, two for our city. One is the command and control vehicle, which is simply our command van. And since the last hearing, it's been deployed twice. So it was deployed to the city of Hillsburg for a, to assist them with the crime scene collection and investigation. They had a shooting on their city beach. city beach along the Russian River. And then ironically, we deployed it last night to the city of Sebastopol. Uh, unfortunately, they had a stabbing and we again helped them with evidence processing and we deployed the van for that. The van is for other things as well. Natural disasters. And it could be planned events such as like the fiftieth anniversary of Qatadi. We had it down Alaplasa Park for that. So that's the command van. The other is, um, beanbag shotguns, which is a less lethal tool, um, which I like to have more or less lethal tools than lethal tools, obviously. Um, and to answer some of the questions that we had last time is would I have to bring this back to council every time there was like an edit with Lexipol? And so the answer is no. Um, what, how the legislation works is once, once a governing agency adopts, uh, a law enforcement policy regarding the military surplus equipment, the agency, our police department, I cannot procure military equipment that's on that list without council approval. Um, so if this ordinance is adopted, I will provide a annual report of when we deploy the command van or use the less lethal shotgun. Um, the less lethal shotgun would appear in the use of force, um, and part of the annual report. And then I would just tell you when we deployed the van in our annual report for public consumption, uh, because that report is, um, published on our website. Um, and so that's, that answers. So I cannot add something from that list post ordinance approval without your permission. The, it was also, there was concern about, um, using less lethal beanbag shotguns in the, in a crowd control issue. So I'm going to go through the, an amendment in the, uh, policy on that. Um, I will share with you that, there is a need for a less lethal shotgun and I want to explain that again, it's a less lethal tool that can be used in circumstances where say a taser wouldn't work or shouldn't, or shouldn't be used. A good example of that is distance. So the beanbag shotgun round has a distance of seventy-five feet where the taser doesn't reach that far. If a, if a suspect who's a danger in himself or to the public, to police was holding an edge weapon such as a knife, um, if they were tased, they could fall on the knife because they just lose, you just lose all control when you're tased because of the, the, uh, the electricity from the taser. Um, somebody could be in some foliage, like a, a bush. Um, for example, that would stop the taser, um, darts from deploying because you have to have two darts connect for the electricity to work. So there's many reasons for this tool. Um, I was also asked, when's the last time we've used it? And I couldn't remember a time when we used it since I've been here. I know I've, I know I've seen it used at previous agencies that I was with. Um, so I would like to go over a few things. Um, Mayor, I believe it was you that wanted me to come back and explain how it would be used in a crowd control environment. So I would, I'll share with you that first of all, we only have four of the, of these shotguns. And if there was a protest, the shotguns would be in the trunks of the vehicle. They would be secured. We're not going to be on a skirmish line firing beanbags indiscriminately into a crowd. Um, and the policy doesn't allow that. So when, when there is, when there's civil unrest and somebody's starting to to be a danger to the public, start breaking government buildings or private buildings, police officers set up an arrest team and try to apprehend that individual because there's sometimes instigators that aren't going along with the peaceful protest and for example, they're going to be arrested. So the arrest team could use a taser. Um, but there may be an appropriate, uh, deployment for the beanbag, um, shotgun, like I just explained previously. Um, and so the arrest team would would point the, the weapon at whoever they're in arrest and try to arrest that individual. They're not going to indiscriminately fire into a, a crowd here in Qatadi. Um, so with the kinetic energy projectile guidelines, that's just fancy words for the beanbag shotgun. Deployment news would go as follows. So the suspect is armed with a weapon and the tactical circumstances allow for the safe application of approved munitions. The beanbag. The suspect has made incredible, has made credible threats to harm himself or others. The suspect is engaged in riotous behavior and is throwing rocks, bottles, or other dangerous projectiles at people and or officers. There's a probable cause to believe that the suspect has already committed a crime of violence and is refusing to comply with lawful orders. But then there's, the policy also, uh, goes into deployment considerations, distance and angle to target, types of munitions employed, which again is going to be beanbag, type and thickness of subjects clothing. And this is important, the subject's proximity to others. Location of the subject, again. And then whether the subject's actions dictate the need for an immediate response and the use of control devices appears appropriate. Um, and then regarding the, the military equipment, policy, which is different than the, than the beanbag policy that I just read, what it does call out also the beanbag policy in it. So there's been some amendments since we last had our hearing. And if you go to page, it's packet page ninety-nine. Um, and you look at that, um, the, the policy that I just read, the, the suspect is armed with a weapon and the tactical circumstances allow for safe application of approved munitions. The suspect has made credible threats to harm himself or others. The suspect is engaged in riotous behavior or is throwing rocks, bottles, or other dangerous projectiles at people and or officers. And when there's probable cause to believe that the suspect has already committed a crime of violence and is refusing to comply with a lawful order. Um, so what's, there's just different verbiage. So you can see that, um, previously there was, it had, it called out training exercises, potentially vicious animals, circumstances where tactical advantage can be obtained. And then lastly, the self-destructive, dangerous and or combative individuals. And then it has riot. And it also had riot crowd control and civil unrest incidents. So that's been amended to mirror the, the four, the four items when it can be deployed in the actual beanbag policy. So that's that amendment. And then if you go to two packet page one-on-one, uh, there was a concern about mutual aid. So the, uh, so it's, it's seven oh nine point six coordination with other jurisdictions, which is just a big word for mutual aid. So Mr. Barker and I think also council wasn't, um, satisfied with the Lexipol language that was provided and that was military equipment should not be used by any other law enforcement agency or member in this jurisdiction unless the military equipment is approved for use in accordance, in accordance with this policy, which was interpreted as our policy. So it now reads, and again, it's draft, it now reads military equipment used by other jurisdictions that are providing mutual aid to this jurisdiction shall comply with their respective, respective military equipment use policies and rendering mutual aid. So those are the amendments. And hopefully answers to some of your questions. And look at my notes. And for now, that's, um, all I have, Mayor.
Well, very good. We'll see if we have any questions from the council. I'll open to questions. And I see a hand up from Mr. Ford. Please lead us off.
Thanks, Mayor Lammon. Um, Chief Parrish, thanks for the presentation and, and I appreciate the amendments to the policy that bring it in line with the beanbag policy and specifically remove crowd control from one of the, yeah, you know, allowed uses. I'm curious, I'll save comments for later, but a question about the, how, how well defined is riotous behavior? What is, like, is that a well-understood term in law enforcement? It sounds very vague to me.
Well, I think it, that is a vague term, but I do, I do see that the policy does have, uh, some description on it, such as throwing rocks and bottles. Um, it would be.
Well, except it says or is engaged in. So that's not a definition of riotous there.
Well, I would interpret it as engaging in criminal behavior.
All right. Um, all right. Thanks. I'll save comments for later.
Very good. Any questions from anybody else? Let me scan the dial here. I'm not seeing any hands. Let's open this up to public count.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Will Proudly, go ahead.
Hello, um, I'm a little bit dismayed to hear that I missed the first part of this hearing. I thought this, uh, item was tabled at the last meeting and was, uh, postponed until now. Um, anyway, I, I would, uh, like to comment specifically about the beanbag rounds. Um, I have questions that they're effective from the range stated in the policy of seventy-five feet. Um, I've heard law enforcement, um, sources say that they're not actually accurate at that, uh, range. Um, a lot of rounds can also be defective and not, um, expand as intended and cause serious injuries. Uh, we saw a lot of, uh, serious injuries at the protests in Santa Rosa during Black Glass Matter, um, including, you know, rounds being deployed inappropriately, not in accordance with policy, the wrong types of ammunition used and, uh, resulted in some serious injuries and some pretty hefty, um,
Well.
settlements for the council.
I need to take a break.
Well, we're going to take a break for five minutes and we'll come right back, assuming everything's just fine. We've had a minor earthquake. I think everybody felt that. So let's just take break for a few seconds and we'll come right back. Uh, it's six forty. Let's check in if we can at six forty-five. Thank you.
Very good.
And Mr. Proudly, I will get back to give you another three minutes if you need apologies.
Sure thing.
City Hall, okay there, Ben?
Looks like it's still there.
Oh, good.
I'm not sure that was the best engineer's assessment I've ever seen, but I'll, I'll take it as good.
Just look behind me. It's still there.
Yeah. Well, I was just going to say, and they say that city council meetings can be dull. Ha!
Well, what was kind of weird is I got the alert before it happened.
There was a little tremor a few minutes before. It was smaller. I noticed a lamp moving just a little bit in my office here, but then there was more movement the second time. So with that, we're at six forty-five. I'm going to check in and make sure that we're all back. And I'm going to check and, uh, see if staff's ready to go get started again. Let's see where, we have Councilmember Sparks. We have Councilmember Moore. I think we have the full complement. Uh, let me check in at City Hall. Are we ready to continue?
We are ready to continue.
Excellent. All right. So we were on.
The chief is not back. The chief is not back and I'm not sure if he needs to be here for this.
He's, he's probably checking on a couple of things. Um, what I'd like to do, I think, is, uh, continue with a public comment. If there's any good questions or anything for the chief, I'm sure Mr. Obit can speak and handle that. And we were in item eleven A, our public hearing on military equipment use policy related to the police department. Mr. Will Proudly had the, uh, microphone and unfortunately got interrupted. Mr. Proudly, if you're still there, if we can put him back on. Uh, not much I can do about Mother Nature doing that, but I allow you as much time as you need to finish up to three minutes.
Yeah, of course. So first of all, can, can someone clarify for me when this, the initial part of this hearing took place?
Well, I can't, we can't have a back and forth like this, but when we're done with public comment, I will speak to that. Mr. Proudly, yes.
Yeah, sure enough. Um, so I'm just gonna, you know, briefly reiterate my remarks. Um, I would just say there's a lot of concern in the medical community and growing in the law enforcement community. I would just say there's a lot of concern in the medical community and growing in the law enforcement community about the safety of these rounds. They're not always deployed as per training and as intended, and they also have a high rate of failure in terms of the rounds themselves actually malfunctioning. That can cause a lot of serious injuries. So, you know, I accept the, the term less lethal, but it still has the potential to be lethal and very damaging. So I think if there's any opportunity in our community to remove these kinds of weapons, I really appreciate the chief's amendment that they won't be used in crowd control situations, but I also agree that the characterization of riotous behavior is a little bit vague and maybe not necessary in the policy because criminal acts are clearly covered in the next line. But anyway, yeah, I'm just concerned that these rounds will be used and hit unintended targets with unintended consequences. So that's my general concern. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Proudie. Let's see if we have any further public comment from anybody else.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I have just spent the entire time from the start of the meeting until now to get the right thing on my computer so that I could raise my hand and talk. Thank you, Adrian, for pointing me in the right direction. Okay. I did submit a statement at the last meeting, and I know that you, as a city council, were able to read it, and Susan Harvey called me the next day, thank you again, Susan, to clarify military equipment and what was actually going on. My, first, let me say, because I couldn't do this at the beginning, I am so pleased that we now have at least one electric vehicle. Bravo! Brava! Okay, now, to this other situation. I am really concerned. I don't know why we need I don't know why we need, how many times are we going to need this? Oh, shoot. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna stop there because my phone is ringing and I don't know how to keep it from interfering with the meeting.
Well, you've used about half your time. Why don't we see if there's anybody else who wishes to speak? And if you want, we can come back to you at the end so you can get your full three minutes.
Okay.
And if not, that's fine, too. So let's see if we have anybody else who wishes to speak.
No further public comment?
All right. Let's see, I'm just making a note here. Can we check back in with Ms. Crump Shears and see if she's got, we all had some technical challenges tonight. We'll see if hers resolved and she can finish her comments.
Marjorie Crump Shears, are you available for public comment?
Now you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know why I'm having such a hard time tonight. Okay. I think my, I've missed a lot of the discussion so far, trying to, trying to just get in so I can participate in this meeting. But I, my, my question is, how much, for, for all that we're talking about in terms of money and need, how much use will we be getting out of the military equipment? And I, I hate that phrase because it's not a military vehicle, but it's being called a military equipment, I guess, because of what's inside it. But the vehicle and the gun, I'm very concerned about whether or not we really need all of that. And that is where I am, and my phone is ringing again, and I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I believe we completed public comment then. I will bring it back to the council for discussion and see who has comments they'd like to start with. Let's see. I see, Chief Parrish, you wanted to reply, and actually, I did mean to reply to Mr. Proudie, too. That's right. So yes, this was originally brought before us in much the same way as you seated on the agenda tonight, Mr. Proudie, back on seven twenty-six. And there was some discussion about wanting to have a further in-depth talk about the plus-minuses of various issues with, potential issues with beanbag weapons. So that was continued to eight twenty-three, and then on eight twenty-three, at the last minute, we lost one of our council members, was not able to attend, who had been interstated in participating in this discussion. So I asked if we could continue it to tonight to make sure that that person had the chance to have their questions answered and share their concerns. So that's the history on that, and now I will go to Chief Parrish.
Thank you. Mayor, you can hear me, correct?
Yes, I can.
As far as, well, I agree with, I agree with Marjorie. I don't like the term military equipment either, because it doesn't sound like military equipment to me as well. I am very familiar with what happened in Santa Rosa during protests. So they have, they have forty-millimeter launching devices, and they launch tear gas, and they have the capability to launch other things than beanbag rounds, and there were some mistakes made. And there was a lawsuit. That did happen. We have shotguns that launch a less-lethal beanbag round. We don't have those rounds that Santa Rosa got sued for. I am concerned about safety of all. And I bet you a lot of chiefs did not do what, what I did, and not that I know everything, but I do know some things from my past. The beanbag shotguns, they can be dangerous when the, when the barrel's not polished. And that, the reason is, is they can tear the, the bag open when it's launched, so shot through the barrel. So I've had our barrels polished completely, so that won't happen. And I say it won't happen because we only use our shotguns to launch beanbag rounds, not actual rounds, and so therefore the barrels don't get dirty, and therefore the bags, you know, won't tear when they're, when they launch. But again, in Santa Rosa, they were using, they were, they got, they had some injuries over devices that were being launched other than beanbags.
All right. Thank you, chief. So I do see a hand up from Councilmember Sparks, so I'm gonna start with you, councilmember.
Thank you so much, and I, I really deeply appreciate continuing this to tonight's meeting so that I could participate in discussion. I shared the concern about the word riotous on page ninety-nine. I think that is too vague, and I would feel uncomfortable supporting this with that word in there. I, when Chief Parrish first read aloud the beanbag policy, he actually, he actually said the word "and" instead of "or," which sort of, I think, is how you're thinking of it, that, that, that these, these, the second half of that sentence sort of explains the first half of the sentence. But I, I agree with some of the other comments that that's not really how it's written. When, when you have the word "or" in there, anything that's perceived as riotous behavior would be grounds for using the gun, which just seems too vague to me. So I would love to see that taken out. And the other thing that I'm uncomfortable with is on page one oh one, the coordination, packet page one oh one, the coordination with other jurisdictions. The, I, I, the way it was described, Chief Parrish, it's not really how I remember it from that July meeting. I remember discussing this, and there was discussion about the previous language, that it would need to be worked out somehow because it would be too difficult for other jurisdictions to comply with our policies if they were bringing in equipment that we don't have on the list, that they needed to use. And, and I talked about, I remember speaking myself about that I, I felt a little uncomfortable with, if we changed it so that they could just bring in and follow their own policies while they were in Qatadi, then that would mean we would have basically, the council would have no control over the types of military equipment that were being used in our jurisdiction. So the, it had been my understanding that there was going to be some, some language that would sort of retain or protect Qatadi from the types of equipment that could be used here, but what has ended up on this draft looks to me like just a complete allowance of any military equipment that, for example, the Sheriff's Department or another law enforcement agency coming in to render aid, like, anything that they allow in their policy would be allowed in Qatadi, and, and I really don't feel comfortable with that. So I, I'd like to have more of a discussion about, are there ways that we could put limits on what sorts of equipment could be brought into Qatadi and used here?
So at the, at the last public hearing, we did discuss this. And I made it clear, and, and all, all council members understood, because we, it was a, it was a long hearing, that if I called for a SWAT team, and it could be the Sheriff's Department, could be Santa Rosa Police Department, if we call for SWAT for a barricaded subject to rescue a hostage or whatever it is, I don't have control over that. The city doesn't have control over that. SWAT team is trained and equipped and trains with their employees and all of their equipment that they, they use. And Qatadi, I would be basically the Public Information Officer only. Now, if there was rioting downtown, and I called for mutual aid, we talked about that, too, and then we started having other police departments showing up, I could have more control over that. But, but every, every agency in Sonoma County, except for the CHP, has Lexapro policy. They would be following similar policies to what what we may approve. Bottom line is, I can't control, I can't control every law enforcement agency in the county, and we may need their help.
All right. Let's see if anybody else has. I see Councilmember Ford, your hands up. Please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Lamont. I have similar concerns as Councilmember Sparks. I thought I understood, I was, the, the meeting in July where the first part of this hearing happened is the one that I missed, so I apologize for not being completely up to speed on that. But the, the seven oh nine point six, the packet page one oh one change, I thought I understood you, chief, to say that the, that the old language, the now-stricken language, was Lexapro language, which says that military equipment can't be used here unless it's in accordance with our policy. So if that's the standard Lexapro language, I'm not seeing how that's consistent with us having no control. So I'm, I'm struggling with that as well. Like, if we're trying to, you know, write a policy that, that is pretty careful about how military, what military equipment is used and how it can be used. But we don't, I don't know, what, what are the mechanisms? Like, we have, we, we have to come up with a policy on, on what agencies we call for mutual aid. I certainly don't want to go down that route.
Nor do I. So on the first hearing, that was Lexapro policy. On package page one oh one, military equipment should be used by another law enforcement agency or member of this jurisdiction unless the military equipment is approved for use in accordance with this policy. I edited that, and our city attorney agreed with the change to military equipment used by other jurisdictions that are providing mutual aid to this jurisdiction shall comply with their respective military equipment, use of policies in rendering mutual aid. So we're just changing it to this policy to their policy. And we didn't, we didn't have a lengthy discussion about this in the previous hearing. But again, if a SWAT team, if I call for SWAT, again, for a barricaded subject that maybe has a hostage, I have, I have to, I'm turning that over to the SWAT team because I can't, I can't dictate their tactics. I, I have the choice not to call SWAT. I do have that choice.
All right. Any more questions for the chief right now, Mr. Ford?
Uh, no, thanks. I'll gather my thoughts and get back in line.
All right. It looks like we're doing a second pass on this one tonight. All right. Well, while we're waiting, let's go to the vice mayor. Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
I have a question. So there was a concern about officers not following policy, and it was stated that in Santa Rosa, they didn't follow policy. Can you explain for everyone what happens when an officer doesn't follow policy?
So if an officer is not following policy, that could enact discipline, which would start with an internal affair investigation by somebody independent that wasn't on scene when it occurred. So I could outsource that to a private eye or another police agency and vet it out to see if there was violations of policy, which would be followed up by discipline.
Okay. So we wouldn't just let that go, because the impression that was left was that policy was not followed in another jurisdiction and nothing happened, and it's your, as our police chief, you would actually do something when policy is not being followed with that individual with some sort of investigation and possible discipline. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I imagine Santa Rosa did the same, but I don't know what their outcome was.
Well, it was implied that, from the speaker, that nothing was done, and, and I don't know whether something was or wasn't, but you, as our chief, would have an investigation and, and take appropriate action, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay. And then I'm really concerned about this whole discussion around other jurisdictions. What I fear is happening here is a move to restrict is, is what it sounds like wants to happen to just what our policy is. My concern is, for our citizens, if we have something going wrong that's so horrible going on in our community, that our police force is trying the best they can to keep our community, both individuals, as well as our businesses, as well as our government offices, safe. If we put restrictions on such that they can't use what they're trained in, we may be stuck standing here with no mutual aid because it is also their prerogative to come or to not come. So I am a little bit concerned when others may utilize other things that maybe we don't use here, but that they've been trained on and that the situation may need. We just haven't had that kind of situation. I'm just, you know, I, I have this vision that, that we're gonna call for mutual aid and no one's coming. And they're not coming because we said, sorry, you, you, you get to use your gun or your voice, and that's all we're gonna let you use, because we've taken every other tool that you have away from you. So that, that's my only concern with us going, you know, too far and telling other jurisdictions during mutual aid specifically what they can and can't use. And that's my concern. other jur- jurisdictions during mutual aid specifically what they can and can't use. And that's my concern. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I'll ask my other colleagues if anybody has any questions. Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand up again, but I'm just gonna make sure that everybody has had one chance to speak at least once before I come back to you. Uh, I'm gonna withhold my comments for our second and final round, hopefully. But I do have a question actually came up in this discussion for the chief. As we talk about other jurisdictions and what policies they may or may not have in regard to whatever their equipment. And I don't think I'll use that term military equipment because I'm looking at our van. And that reminds me more of a rotor rudder van than any sort of military uh, equipment. So, but I'm curious. Are any of our policies in this county or in our mutual aid areas that terribly different? Are any significant difference allowances that you're aware of in terms of tactics, weapons? Is somebody rolling in here with a command vehicle that looks like the Bat Mule, Mobile, bristling with weapons and turrets? And I don't mean that to be flippant, but I'm just saying I have a feeling we're probably pretty close in a lot of this because most of it's evolving best practice.
Yeah, that's correct. Mutual aid's been around forever. There are so many scenarios out there. A lot of, a lot of decisions are are made immediately for the safety of the public. Uh, it's gotta be fluid and you can't, you can't box yourself in. So right now in Sonoma County, there's nothing to say that um, if I call for the sheriff or for Runner Park to come for that matter. We tell them how to do their jobs. And so like every day, every day on patrol, Sonoma State University Police Department and Runner Park Police Department and Rancho Fire District. We're always, we're working together all the time. This goes on every day. And we don't dictate their decisions or their equipment. But if something significant happens and we need help, um, we need to rely on other agencies' expertise and sometimes equipment for, for our help and for the safety of our city.
Yeah, I think that my first reflection on this is that I see no example of anything that would be problematic, that would create a huge enough problem to make it worthwhile to try and create some sort of system where we have a variable system. It's like choose one from column A or choose one. You, you can come here and do this, but you can't go here. I, I can't see that as being workable at all, frankly. I think that kind of falls apart. You lose the potential for significant mutual aid that way. So my first, my response in this is I understand the concern, but I don't see any example of the problem truly existing. I do see some bad potential outcome though. And I don't see any cogent system that could actually do this. I think we have to trust in evolving best practices in this county and work together. Um, having said that, now, since I've made that comment, I'm gonna go first to Councilmember Moore and then to Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. In this whole situation, I, I, I'm looking at it through more of a pragmatic lens. Um, I know there was some concern amongst some of the council regarding riotous behavior. So if you look at the definition of riot, it's a disturbance of the peace by several persons assembled and acting with a common intent and executing a lawful or unlawful enterprise in a violent and turbulent manner. So I think that defines riotous behavior in that regard. And pragmatically, um, if the fit hits the shan and we need to call in uh, help from other cities mutual aid, it's gonna be really difficult to say, hey, is that a beanbag you're gonna use there? You know, we got X number of people that are riotous. So um, I don't have any issues with this currently. Uh, I, I think that this is a pragmatic approach. Hopefully we never have to use it. I don't see us having a riot in Katati. I'm not aware that we've ever had one. You know, we've had, I think, a demonstration that was pretty peaceful coming from Sonoma State. So I, I don't have an issue with these nor the command vehicle. So that's my position on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I, uh, so far we've been presented with sort of two versions of this text on page one oh one. One which does not allow any military equipment that's not in compliance with our policy to be used at all. And one that allows any military equipment from another jurisdiction that's in compliance with their policy to be used. Could be any kind of military equipment. I do not accept that those are the only two possibilities, that it's all or nothing. We can be creative. We can come up with a solution that's going to work better and protect people from military equipment that we don't feel is safe and we don't want used in our district. There's a way to thread the needle and not just go with one of these extremes. Um, so I, I think we need to go back to the drawing board with this. I think we need to spend some time thinking about it. I don't feel that I have enough information right now about what is being used in other districts. For example, I'm not up to speed on exactly what the policy on various military equipment in the Santa Rosa PD is right now. Now, if it's still the same as it was several years ago, then I definitely would not want them coming and using these canisters that we've talked about in our district i- in Katati. If they've changed and updated their policies, then I would feel more comfortable. I assume they probably have, but I don't really have that information. So if we're signing on with this policy to allow any jurisdiction that might render mutual aid to bring whatever military equipment they have into Katati, I don't really even know what all of that is. I, based on this new language, I don't, I just don't have the information about what we're, what we're signing off on tonight. So I would like to see more information about what are the typical types of equipments that are proved in other, in other law enforcement agencies that could be used in Katati? And um, and have more discussion about this. That's not just one of these two, two extremes. I think we can find a better way.
All right, thank you. Would anybody else like to comment one more time? Councilmember Morris, your hand up. Is that a legacy hand or a new one?
It's a legacy. Let me leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the page ninety-nine and the riotous behavior phrase, which even according to the definition that um, coun- councilman, councilmember Moore found, which is one of many definitions, a bunch of which are much more vague than that. Even according to that definition, three people getting together and you know, engaging in violent behavior, viol- violent coordinated behavior is already covered by, say, the second half of that sentence. Or the uh, item D. So I'm not, I'm not the, the fact that riotous behavior can be interpreted to be as vague as engaging in criminal behavior, which could be littering, it could be, I mean, it, it, it's, it's just too vague a term to leave in here because it, it means that an officer who perceives somebody as behaving riotously um, is then licensed to use the beanbags. And so that item C, I don't see what we lose if we remove the riotous behavior or phrase and just the subject is engaged in throwing rocks, bottles or other dangerous projectiles at people and or officers. It seems to me that's the the primary focus of that uh, item C.
Let me ask you, Mr. Ford, if I might. So typically, when people are creating legal documents like this, they'll give a few examples of something, then they'll use one general term that can encompass a few different things to give some latitude. Uh, I see the need for that here. If we remove riotous behavior, then essentially we're just saying, well, they have to be either throwing rocks, bottles or other projectiles at people and or officers. There could be other actions that might be just as problematic. Uh, do you have a suggestion for something that still has some generality that can be used but has enough specificity to be satisfactory?
Well, I, I'd be curious to hear from the chief what this item C is intended to cover that's not covered by A, B and D. So D covers probable cause of violent crime. B covers making credible threats to harm himself or others. A covers armed with a weapon. Um, so I'm not clear what circumstances riotous behavior is intended to cover that isn't covered by those three or by throwing things, um, throwing projectiles.
I agree with the mayor that um, that riotous behavior is followed up by like throwing rocks, bottles and the policy can't simply call out that you can only deploy it if rocks are being thrown or bottles or whatever. That's how I interpret it. I would, not to catch Mr. Barker flat footed, I would like to see if the city attorney has a comment on um, riotous behavior. Um, because we don't want property damage. In our city and not being able to address it. Um, counselor, do you have any comment?
While you're thinking about that, Mr. Barker, let me toss one more thing in the mix for you to consider. As we look at this line, it says the suspect is engaged in riotous behavior or throwing rocks, bottles, et cetera.
Right.
I wonder if this would make more sense and have more comfort for everybody if it said the suspect is engaged in riotous behavior such as throwing rocks, bottles, not other dangerous projectiles. What this does here is removes, I believe, the concern that Mr. Before understandably had about what degree of severity might be perceived as riotous. Is any small breaking of the law, throwing a gum wrapper on the sidewalk, littering? Uh, riotous? It certainly isn't, and I don't think it would be regarded as. But with that sort of definition, you at least give us a much clearer picture of what that general term riotous behavior means. There's a certain level of severity that's demonstrated by those definitions. So I'll ask Mr. Barker anything he has to suggest and I'll ask him to comment on that too, because that might help square this for us a little better.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I uh, I was looking uh, during the meeting here uh, for a standardized definition of riotous. Um, I can't remember what the phrase is exactly. Uh, riotous behavior. I didn't find anything that a standard definition, um, in that kind of circumstance, the courts have looked looked to dictionary definitions and the the pretty standard dictionary definition is, is that riot is a, a violent crowd. Um, so I suppose what this means is that this individual is in a crowd. Uh, and um, they are engaged in violent behavior. Um, and, and then um, you know, uh, force could be applied in that situation. I do like the idea of, of adding such as, uh, instead of or uh, or is. I think that kind of puts a little bit of a box around what riotous behavior means and adds a little bit of gravitas to, to the phrase, so. Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't be of more help.
No, that's helpful. Chief, let me ask Chief Parrish very quickly on the suggestion that seems to be gathering some steam of changing it to as such. Mayor, it makes sense to me. Thank you. Okay. Well, good. I think we have that nailed down a little better. One more time around, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Moore and then Councilmember Hardy. And then I have some final comments myself.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. Um, I, I think the, the concern has been addressed. Um, I, I think of the riots that occurred after the George Floyd killing and that the folks that were not necessarily demonstrators, but were there smashing windows and, and uh, creating issues and, and um, there's, there's been some thought that that was not even the parties involved, but other parties. Um, to me, something like that would be riotous behavior, not just throwing rocks or bottles, et cetera. So um, I think the language such as in, inserted into that particular sentence uh, would assist in that. Thank you.
All right. And I'm gonna go, and I see our city manager had his hands up. He might have something helpful here. I'm gonna ask him to speak before I go to the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if it's helpful, but um, just uh, I thought I'd ask the question to the chief and to uh, the city attorney. The um, you know, the common understanding, at least my understanding of riotous behavior is, is violent, it can be violent crime, which is covered under D, but it also typically would include, you know, lighting cars on fire, breaking store windows, just doing general property damage. Is that considered a violent crime? Um, would that be covered under D?
I would say yes, because arson's a felony and those other things you described, yes.
Okay, so that would cover that? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your patience, Vice Mayor Harvey. Please go ahead.
That's fine. Damien just kind of clarified for me. What I was concerned about is I wanted to be sure that um, either the crime of violence or the riotous behavior covered also property damage, because oftentimes um, it's not just um, damage to um, others, it's damage to property. And, and I think that that's important that we um, have that addressed. And it sounds like a crime of violence, according to the chief, does include um, property. So that makes me um, feel a little bit better. I like the suggestion of riotous behavior such as. Um, I think that that um, helps clarify. And I still, you know, I really am concerned of putting us in a situation where we're here and we have thousands of people that have jumped onto our city and are doing horrible things. And no one is gonna come because we have to sit us sit aside and say, well, you can do this and you can do this and you can do this, but you can't do this and you can't do this, you know? I mean, a- as the chief said, these things happen in split seconds. Um, and when, when we have, you know, let's just say that they start breaking all of the windows in all of our downtown. Um, we need to get that situation under control or, or we could not have a downtown, as well as we could have many of um, our citizens hurt. And, and as was pointed out by Councilmember Moore, oftentimes it's not our citizens that, that are, are doing these things, as seen in other cities. Um, you know, it, it's these groups that come in and they move from city to city. Um, you, you know, I looked at the flip side of some of the stuff that um, was provided by um, Councilmember Sparks in Austin. That was horrendous. And those poor officers were so outnumbered. It is pretty amazing that there were, was not a lot more damage and a lot more injuries based upon just how badly that went south. So I hope that it never, ever happens in our community. I just don't want to leave folks with the option of their words or their gun. I, I just, that is really extremely frightening to me. So whatever tools that we can use that um, are, appear to be less lethal, I would be more in favor of. And you know, people's are saying, oh, well, these beanbags can be lethal. Well, you know what? The throwing of the rocks and the bottles can also be lethal, as can the hands of some of those people that are hurting other people. Um, so anything can be lethal, pushing someone down and, and having them hit their head intentionally or not can be lethal. So it's not pretty when it happens and it's awful when it happens. But I, I don't want to uh, you know, restrict our community a- and have us standing here holding the bag and say, oh, well, you know, we, we decided that um, uh, we're not gonna let anything, uh, any kind of tools be used here. And that's what we decided. And so community, you're stuck with that and no one will come and help us. So that's my concern. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And Councilmember Sparks, I see your hand up one more time. We'll hear from you and then I'll make my comments.
Thank you. Um, I, I concur with um, Council, Vice Mayor Harvey that we do not want to be in a position where nobody's gonna come help us. Obviously, I don't want that either. I do think that there's a false choice being presented that the only options are to allow any military equipment at all or to allow none. And that's just not true. We can, we can be more circumspect and we can come up with a middle way where we still have some oversight over what happens in our community. I just think we need more discussion on this and we need to know what are the types of equipment that would be used. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention- to mention is this emphasis on property damage. I agree that we need some way to keep it under control, but allowing it, allowing use of beanbag rounds for any property damage type crimes is concerning to me because they can be lethal. And if somebody's graffitiing a wall or breaking a car window, would we shoot someone for doing that? Probably not. I don't think we should be shooting them with a beanbag round that could be potentially fatal either. So to me, violence or the threat of violence is the key, and I don't think these weapons should be deployed for property damage. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So let's see, bear with me. My notes are all over the place, and I'll try and stitch them together here. But basically, two items to look at tonight, I guess, the use of the kinetic energy projectiles or beanbags, as they're more commonly known. And then the question of mutual aid. I don't see that being a false choice. I just don't see any way possible to start going through the list of respondents, decide who is appropriate in our view, and who can provide mutual aid and who can't. I mean, if we found, we had somebody in the community that had egregiously different weapons and usages, I may, I might well be interested in that, but we haven't. And nobody's brought forward any suggestion of this. We've been over this for months. This is our third meeting to talk about this. There's been no suspicion, no discussion, and no examples of this in the county. So I don't see it, I'm not saying it's not a serious concern, it's a completely valid concern, but I don't see it strong enough to me to take a chance in breaking mutual aid. That would be a disservice, I think, to the community. Moving over to beanbags, I see two main issues, as I'm sure we all do. Injuries resulting from inappropriate use or just pure accident that result in headshots. And also somewhat related, the use to disperse crowds, which did happen in this county at least once, and has happened in other places. Unfortunately, our policies do protect against both, if you look through them. We've gone over the deployment considerations and the circumstances for deployment, which cover, that I'll also mention that our policy manual, our PD policy manual on page sixty-six does state that the head and neck should not be intentionally targeted, except when the officer reasonably is that the suspect poses an imminent threat of serious bodily injury or death to the officer or others. So it's pretty clear, we try to avoid that, we do our best to avoid that. I do believe that it's a possibility with this weapon that bad things can happen. I won't argue that. And I appreciate some of the examples that Councilmember Sparks researched and shared with us, because that was helpful for me to flesh out that knowledge further. Problems can happen. But I think we have to remember, there's an escalating scale of responses we use to enforce law. And if we remove something in an escalary step, then people are forced either to not enforce the law or protect other people, or they're forced to jump to something more lethal. And I think that's the basic thing that we need to keep in mind. That was obvious to me from the beginning. And I'll just share a personal story of why I know that beanbags can go wrong occasionally, but why I'm supportive of keeping this tool available for us. In the circumstance, we could use it, because we have come close to circumstances during the crawl pre-COVID several times, where we had hundreds and hundreds of hundreds of people in that street, people from other outside areas, creating, leading to great tension and fighting. They could have turned to a real easy riotous condition, certainly with property damage, but more importantly, too, with damage to other people back and forth. So at any rate, the story I wanted to share was of a rather close friend in my family. This person, some years back now, probably more than a decade and a half ago, had a full dissociative breakdown and wound up barricaded in the house they resided in, had a weapon, and it was a police response there. And to make a long story short, this person was ordered to drop the weapon and come out. Instead, sadly, this person, because of the state they were in, came out waving the weapon. This person was stopped with a beanbag shot. Unfortunately, the beanbag shot caught them in the face, perhaps because this person's about five foot two, but, and that was problematic. But nevertheless, I think to myself, what would have been the response if those officers weren't able to use that kinetic force weapon and had their next chances? I have somebody coming out waving a weapon. I have a choice to either do nothing or to pull my service revolver. That outcome would have been much, much worse to me. So I do believe our policies protect against the main, protects against the main concerns of litigation. And as long as we follow them legally, I think we're in a good place. And more importantly, I'm concerned about not litigation, but more being in best practices. And I do see our policies reflecting that. I do believe this, and extra time we've taken to have that discussion has improved them somewhat even extra. So I think that's a good thing. So I'm quite comfortable supporting this tonight as it stands with the one amendment that we did agree to earlier, and I believe staff has that language used in such as. So I see one more hand from Councilmember Moore. After that, I'm going to ask if somebody wishes to make a motion to introduce an ordinance, and we'll see if we're going to introduce this or not. Go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. I would like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance adopting a military equipment use policy in accordance with AB four eighty-one as amended with the language discussed.
All right. Do we have a second for this?
I would second that motion.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Vice Mayor Harvey. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
No.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. So that carries three to two, and we do have introduced an ordinance, and we will see this back. So next, we move to our regular agenda. Bear with me just a second here. And this is item twelve A, and this is consideration, the final direction on our Catati Trail and Downtown Interpretive Sign Panel Designs. And if we could have our staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. Councilmembers, I have a brief PowerPoint to just try to provide some visual aids on this topic. It's coming up now. And I'll ask Kerry to advance the slides for me. So yeah, this is just hopefully a conclusion of the City of Catati Wayfinding Interpretive Panel Sign Designs and Discussion. We'll go to the next slide. There's some history in the staff report. Way back in two thousand seventeen, we began this. Kerry, if we can go to the next slide. There we go. With the grant from A Bag MTC for the development and installation of a bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding program. In two thousand eighteen, the city council authorized a professional services agreement with a sign contractor and creating a steering committee. The committee worked over a year on the design, gathered public input through multiple surveys and public meetings. And in two thousand nineteen, the plan was approved. Part of that plan was obviously some signage and construction contacts were issued in two thousand twenty-one to get those signs installed. And some of the signs are in place around the city now. I'm sure some of you have seen them. However, during that process of awarding the construction contracts, there was concern raised over some of the terminology in the interpretive panels that are to be placed on those. And so council authorized construction and installation of the broader program and some of the map graphics, etc., but had directed staff to go back and revisit the language on the interpretive panels. And if we go to the next slide, this is one of them. And so there's just some minor changes, essentially. This is an updated version. It has a new photograph there of Jack Price, I believe, I'm sorry, Prince. There is some questions. Other Price or Prince was the correct name. The car is an updated photograph. And there's some suggested edits in red here from a member of the public who reviewed this updated graphic. But this is the proposed sign that staff is asking for approval of, but incorporating the comments received from the public regarding the red or incorporating the red font suggestions, and then also some additional input received by, from Jenny Blaker on the content. And if we go to the next slide, similar, this is one of the trail interpretive signs. Again, it has a few red edits, and then also some kind of more purple or magenta suggested text. One of the directives from the city council was that staff engage with the Greatin Rancheria tribe to get their input, as we are referencing them in some of the signed content. Unfortunately, staff has been unsuccessful in getting them to provide a response or direction on this. The sign design, as it's shown, was sent to them, highlighting that language, identifying the photograph of the structure, which has been pointed out, may not be the most accurate representation, just because we don't have a lot of redwoods here on the Santa Rosa Plain. It would have most likely been a tulie type structure. But these are the graphics as they're proposed, but staff is requesting approval from the city council, but incorporating additional input as received and attached to the staff report. And we'll go to the next slide. This is the last one. There's a horizontal and a vertical graphic proposed. We are recommending that we update the language regarding the tribe and their presence here in the Santa Rosa Plain for ten thousand years, obviously making correct references to Catati Creek critters, and then making some of the grammatical errors fixed. And so with that, we'll go to the next slide. And, oh, sorry, I wanted to point out, we did talk to the historical society, heard from a few citizens, Marie McNaughton and Jenny Blaker. Unfortunately, no response to the tribe. And when I referenced input is ongoing, was we actually had two rounds of comments. One, we incorporated, then sent those updated graphics to them, and they provided an additional response, which is before the council this evening with the red edits and the most recent email commentary. One thing that I wanted to point out, because there was a suggestion that we change the photographs, there was a struggle for staff to get high-quality photos with permissions to integrate into the design. So if there is direction from the council to update those, I would just ask that someone provide both a high-quality photograph that satisfies their concerns and also gives us permissions to incorporate it into the sign design. But with that, we'll go on to the formal recommendation, which is that the city council and the public review the final draft, provide direction on any further edits, and incorporate additional input received, and then allow the final design and installation of those panels to be installed. And just to point out, staff is aware that a few of the existing maps that are on the kiosks around the city don't seem to take into consideration the actual context. And so flipping them in some instances to the other side of the sign would make much more sense. And we have included that in the scope of the construction, once the consultant, or I'm sorry, the contractor gets out there and installs the final interpretive panel designs. So with that, I'm available for any questions. If we go to the next slide, it's just a question slide and an example of one of the slides. I'm happy to hear your direction and get more input from the public.
Well, thank you, Mr. Howson. I can tell from your presentation, it must have been a challenge indeed to find photos that were usable, enough quality, as well as being, having the appropriate permission. So with that caveat, I'll go back to the council and see if we have any questions or direction for staff before we go to public comment. Let's see here. I'm seeing a hand from Vice Mayor Harvey. Please go ahead.
We say that we got no response from Greaton. What was our method of trying to get ahold of them? Did we just send the stuff by email and got no response? Did we also try to, you know, be a little bit more proactive than that? Could you?
Yeah, so I did send email. So I have ongoing discussions with the tribal historic preservation officer. That's a formal title of most tribes in California. There's a lot of state mandates with regards to city having to engage with tribal representatives in SEQA, SB thirty-five projects, housing element updates. There's a lot of law, and frankly, some of it's fairly recent. And my, there's, I think a couple of things. One, I think they are being inundated with requests to consult from every jurisdiction within the county. And so I think their resources, although they've significantly ramped up, are somewhat constrained, and that affects, they kind of have to pick and choose and prioritize what they respond on. And then, you know, I do think frankly, in my experience, a lot of tribal organizations would prefer to present their own information to the public through their own conduits. And that puts Catati in a challenging situation, given the history of Catati and the name of Catati. So I do think it's kind of threading a needle to try to give the nod and recognition to the, you know, the presence of the tribe in the early history, but doing it in a way that's sensitive and frankly, get their support. I do think it's a challenge often.
So we've only tried to contact them via email?
Oh, well, I've tried to contact them via email, and I've been in meetings with them with a list of all the projects that we'd like to talk to them about. And this was on the list, and they did not bring it up. I don't think we're likely to hear input from them on this, in my experience.
All right. I just wanted to be sure that we had, you know, done as much as we could possibly to get their input, and it is their prerogative to choose to provide input or not. So thank you.
All right. Let's see. While I'm sitting here wool gathering, I'll look and see if anybody else has any questions for staff. Not seeing any hands at the moment from the four of us. Let me just ask you very quickly. They're very handsome, very nicely done, and I certainly don't want to be the person coming in and doing last minute design editing. Let's change the fonts. But I was curious, I noticed that the Catati Speedway is featured very largely on one. I'm curious how that decision was made. It was just basically the best picture. It seemed like the most timely. Any feedback on that?
Well, I think there's a couple, a couple of things. I think, one, it is an interesting photograph, and it is kind of a, you know, catchy graphic. So, you know, as graphic designers, I think some of the design teams lean towards that. But then also, the location of the track being out by the smart station, there will be one of these signs located there. So that the context did feed into it. We don't have one that's, the context is specific to downtown. So because that graphic will be used on two panel, two kiosks, one at the smart station and one downtown. But that was, the context of that location was part of the thought.
Well, that makes a lot more sense to me. And I do have a tie-in. I don't know if it's appropriate or usable, and maybe, but it mentions that the Speedway was dismantled, and the wood from it went to build homes and businesses in the area. And I would say, comma, including the flooring at the Redwood Cafe. That certainly relates, there's your tie into the downtown. I believe that's a known fact. We could double check with Ms. McNaughton and the historical society, just to make sure. Assuming there's room, that might be your tie into downtown, but I think it looks great. So I'll ask one more time, any questions from the council? Not seeing any hands. Let's go to public comment and see if the public has anything they'd like to share with us.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raise hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Oh, good evening. Thank you. I didn't realize I had my hand up. I have submitted comments in writing to the staff, and it looks as though we can still do that and still have them taken into account. So I think I'll leave it, because it's really detailed about exact wording, and that one picture of a redwood shelter, which I really do think should be a tulie shelter, although I defer to the tribe if they do come back to you on anything. Thank you for your efforts, and I will follow up by email.
Maria McNaughton, go ahead. Maria, go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. I want to thank the staff for their patience and their courtesy. Thank you. I want to thank the staff for their patience and their courtesy in trying to get all the details of historical documentation down. It's been a long process and we're still not quite done with it. But I do appreciate that. I also concur with Jenny Blaker that the photograph from Kula Loklo is probably not as appropriate for Catati as it could be. But also, I do not have an alternative photo to offer. But I would say that the text that relates to the Coast Mewoc as it stands is incorrect. Some of that copy was placed as suggested questions for the tribe or tribal representatives and can't stand as it is. So I am concerned as to what the next step in that might be. I was emailing frantically last night, trying to connect with other tribal representatives. And the Great and Rancheria is not the only resource that we have. And there are a great many other people within the tribe or who have spent their lives studying the Coast Mewoc, who might be able to alter the texts appropriately. So I would encourage the city council to agree in principle to continue with this process, but not to approve the copy as it stands. Thank you.
Mayor Lammon, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring it back to the council for discussion then. Let me check in with staff. There was a suggestion from the public that we approve this tonight, but still not sign off on the text and potentially extend this to a larger timeframe. Any issues, problems, or concerns with that? I know we've had a long wait for these, some of the signs to come in. We've had some issues with vandalism and tagging on the signs because they were blank and that calls for that. Or is this workable or not? What sort of timeline would staff think might be the most appropriate? Because it strikes me, I would love to hear from Grayton. There may be other references, but they are our reference. But if they choose not to respond to this, then that's.
Yeah, so I absolutely think the comments are valid and would appreciate essentially taking the comments, putting them into the graphics, or at least editing the copy and then re-providing it for feedback from the folks who provided it before we do the finalized design. I was struggling with this issue regarding tribal representation. And a couple of ideas that occurred to me, one, we could take copy from the website of Great and Rancheria because that's them in their own words conveying their information, which I thought might be an appropriate way to get some information onto the sign. That was provided directly from them, although not necessarily in response to our request. And then also, I do have a list of cultural resource evaluators. So essentially archaeologists who the tribe, it's a preferred list from the tribe. And one of those is an organization that's part of Sonoma State. And I know that they do a lot of cultural resource work. And so getting some input from Sonoma State archaeologists may be a way, who are, you know, essentially part of that preferred list, maybe a way to also get some additional language appropriate to Catati, but also that's respectful of the tribes and their history.
Okay. And you think this can be done without significantly changing the demo copy we have here, still being essentially that same message and in a timeframe that's workable for staff?
Well, that would be what I would do is ask them to comment specifically on that language and then potentially seek out a more appropriate photograph for the shelter to see if they have anything in their archives that we could seek to utilize.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Let's go to Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Just during this conversation, I found a Library of Congress photo of an appropriate shelter that seems to have no restrictions. So I'll forward that to you. But also, I'm wondering, are there just any examples of this kind of structure that we could just send a photographer out to? Does anyone know if there's something nearby?
There's some examples down in Nevada with the Nevada Pre-History Museum by Nevada Creek. I do remember seeing, sadly, I remember the bark one for sure, but I think there was a secondary structure. Might have been tools. I'm not sure. So that might be something. And that was in place as of about a month ago. Get a nice colored picture there, at least that way. But there were two structures down there as examples.
Well, I would be supportive of moving forward with approving this with the caveat that the photo and the factual discrepancies were fixed before they get printed.
All right. Any other comments from anybody else in the councils or general consensus on that? Vice Mayor Harvey, go ahead.
I would generally agree with that statement, but I don't want this to go on for another four years. So I would agree with that if we could put some time boundaries on that. Because as you pointed out, we're experiencing vandalism on there. And, you know, we could, you know, kind of work this forever and ever and ever. And it will, we'll never get it perfect. So I'd be happy with that as long as we put some timeframe on it. Thank you.
Mr. Ford. I'm comfortable with that approach. I don't want us to force it to come back to council again. I think we're close enough that we just name a few things that staff can work out with appropriate the historical society and Jenny, and we're good to go.
So in terms of timeframe, are we comfortable leaving that perhaps to staff with the indication that the council in general would not like to see this extended terribly long if possible? And then number two, that we're comfortable with it not coming back to staff, unless there's some significant change that perhaps staff feels we should look at. Does that sound appropriate to everybody? All right. Let me check in with staff then. We are looking just for you and direction tonight. Staff, do you have enough direction and input from the public and the council tonight to move forward then?
I believe so. So just to summarize, the council supports moving forward with this design, incorporating edits provided by public comments, and that's grammatical and factual edits. Seeking to incorporate a more appropriate structure, identifying the historic, I'm sorry, prehistoric tribal residents essentially, or habitats. And then also trying to get some professional input on both the language and the appropriateness of the structure that we choose to use as a photograph.
All right. I think that's what I heard. I'm seeing nodding heads. Perfect. Well, thank you very much for that. And I'll thank also Jenny Blaker and Marie McNaughton for a lot of input into this, a lot of paying attention and helping out. Appreciate the public support on this. So with that, we move then to item 12B on our regular agenda tonight. And this is a city council consideration of the Sonoma Grand Jury response. So if we could have our presentation on that tonight, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. This one is also coming out of the community development department. And so Carrie, she's got this presentation there. We'll just go right into it. If you go to the next slide, Carrie. So very brief project description. It's just a request that the council review the 2020 grand jury report. There's kind of a two-part report titled Affordable Housing Monitoring and Compliance, and then Affordable Housing Past, Present, and Future, both of which were attached to the report. Review the draft response that staff has proposed, provide any necessary directions or edits. And then authorize the mayor to sign and submit the response to the grand jury. Mayor, we do need you to come in and sign that tomorrow in order to get it back tomorrow is the deadline. And I apologize for painting you into that corner. It is kind of a unique one that the grand jury report was sent directly to the mayor and asked directly for the mayor to respond with the signature and the attach. So we'll go right into the next slide. So in June of 14th of this year, Sonoma County Grand Jury, sorry for the typo, submitted two reports to the city addressed to the mayor as identified. Affordable Housing Past, Present, and Future was essentially discussing and summarizing the challenges with housing in Sonoma County being short in supply and the cost. It points out that the updated RENA mandates are about 14, almost 15,000 new units to be built over the next eight years. Council is very familiar with our share of that being about 250 units. And then that more than half of them are designated as affordable housing. And so it was essentially seeking to identify some of the constraints to the development of affordable and housing in general, targeting it on local government's ability or local government constraints and our ability to respond to those. And then making some recommendations and some findings and recommendations, I'm sorry. The other report was essentially, it's about monitoring and compliance. And it's in response to some citizen complaints and reports published by the Press Democrat over the last year. So I'm sure some of the council and community is familiar with those reports. I'm happy to talk about specifics as needed. But as I talk about, the response is due tomorrow. And each report makes multiple findings and recommendations and asks for a response to each. Many include statements regarding other jurisdictions and timelines that are not under the city's control. And so you'll see in the staff draft response, there is some mention to that. Just, you know, the grand jury report is kind of paints and broad brushes, whereas we were trying to respond purely for Catati. We can't speak for other jurisdictions. We have no control over other jurisdictions decision-making. So we do try to point that out in some instances. But it's worth noting that Catati has engaged with all of the other communities in the county on this issue, on providing a coordinated response as the grand jury is requested. And we have began a collaboration process to address some of the issues or work together, streamline things where we can get things as consistent as possibly as we can. So if we go to the next slide. You know, monitoring and compliance talks about 11 findings and seven recommendations specific to the city of Catati. As I talked about, generally broad brush, but it doesn't always capture some of our individual nuance. And as I also talked about, it recommends a coordinated streamlined response countywide. Essentially, the more things can be done the same in all these jurisdictions, then the more predictable it is for the affordable housing developers and monitors. Our recommendation is that the council agree to four of these findings, disagree with five, and neither agree or disagree with one. And it's worth noting, Catati has never had our own housing authority. Housing monitoring and compliance has never been a task assigned to the city because we had this partnership with the County Community Development Commission. That partnership and the Community Development Commission has kind of fallen apart over the last few years and they're in a rebuilding mode. And so I do want to point out that staff has leveraged the additional resources that the council gave us, the halftime employee that the council authorized for a technician position to essentially begin to build out our monitoring and compliance program. While we're also continuing to engage with the county and discuss options with them as to them picking back up that service. So we're trying to come at the issue from both sides to make sure that we can meet these mandates and the requirements that are upon us. And we do thank the council for giving us the resources to do that because it has been a critical support. So we're getting on to the next slide. It just summarizes kind of the next or the other side of the report. There's had a much more finding, 17 of them, and eight recommendations specific to Catati. You know, it's a lot of things we've been talking about over the last, you know, two years plus timeline with regards to constraints on development of housing. You know, it points out a variety of things and talks about them and things that the community and the council is very well aware of. It was interesting, a lack of local funding was not really discussed. So the redevelopment, you know, the removal of redevelopment and that change in how it affected our ability to fund some things wasn't referenced. And so some of the jurisdictions did choose to include that in our response or in their response. And the draft response before the council does include a reference to that. Again, similar to the other element of the report, staff's recommending council agree with five, disagree with nine of the findings. And then I wanted to point out that we have and the council has implemented several of these recommendations already, already implemented them and then included several more as draft policy or draft programs in the six-cycle housing element. So just, we were building up to responding to this and the timing is really good in that we've been thinking about these issues and we have some plans on how to respond to them. So we'll go to the next slide. So just a summary of some of the issues, as I talked about, a lot of the findings and recommendations are outside of our control or frankly, talk about unvetted costs. So we can't really commit to them. One of the, one of the recommendations was that we all use the same monitoring software. You know, I have no idea what that software would cost. It's just, we're not able to commit to that in this moment. And also, our numbers are very much different and much smaller than, say, you know, one of the larger jurisdictions. And so it's kind of an apples and oranges approach. But we just wanted to point out that that's some of the reasons that we are making the draft response that we did. Also, similarly, we can't commit to the timelines. There was a lot of direction to get things accomplished by the 31st or the first of the year, 31st of December, January 1st. But our housing element is not going to be adopted by then. We're about to publish likely this week for 30 days. Then after that's reviewed and commented on by the public, it goes to the state for 90 days and will likely have to make some revisions when we get back to it. So we just are not going to be able to meet that timeline. Also, we can't commit to some of the budget needs in the middle of this fiscal year or other agencies' decision-making. I wanted to point out that while the, the report forces us to say we partially or we disagree from the staff perspective, we could have just as easily said we partially or we agree. In some of those instances, it's just that that's the language that it forced us to use. And then just to point out that the Community Development Commission at the county has not committed to re-authorizing their past program to assist us with housing authority administrative duties. And so that's why staff is taking the approach of essentially trying to parallel track two different responses to ensure we meet the needs of monitoring here in Catati. And so with that, we'll go to the last slide, which is just the recommendation that the city council receive the grand jury reports on affordable housing review and provide direction on the draft responses and authorize the mayor to sign and submit the responses tomorrow. So I am here, ready to take any edits, get that polished up first thing in the morning. And then we'll have the mayor come sign in and we will deliver it to the county.
And I'm guessing that's a tomorrow AM you're looking for, not 3:30, 4 o'clock?
Well, it depends on how many edits we get for this process. But I would, I think by 10 or 11, and then I'll run it down to the county or someone on staff will and turn it in hand-delivered. And we'll go to the next slide. It just shows one of the, I thought this was appropriate. I was out at Jamie Lane and it's one of the homes under construction. Carrie, if you go to the next slide. Just because, you know, we have been doing a lot lately with housing and I think it's worth celebrating and also looking forward to that project getting occupancy even in the very near term.
Excellent. All right. Let's bring it back to the council. I'm going to start with the vice mayor and then go to Councilmember Sparks.
I think Councilmember Sparks' hand was up first, there, to be fair.
All right. Well, then to be fair, we'll go to Councilmember Sparks first.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Mr. House, just on page 164. I'm sorry, I would have let you know earlier, but I didn't notice it until very recently. The numbering on the findings on the summary at the top half of packet, page 164, there seemed to be a lot of errors. It's just the numbers don't match with what's in the following pages. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll double check that before we submit it.
All right. Now, this time for sure, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. So does the county get funding to perform this monitoring?
So we, us in the smaller jurisdictions, we all combine to be what's called the urban county and we're called non-entitlement jurisdictions. And there's a lot of technical definitions that go into that. But essentially, the smaller, I think, five jurisdictions in the county, only Petaluma and Santa Rosa get their own direct federal allocation of money. We have chosen as a group to all pool our money with the county. So funding comes into the county. In theory, our share as well as all the other cities' share. And then I serve on a board where we vote on, on how that money gets spent. And lately, it's, there's been a ton of additional money to, to support a lot of different housing issues. And there's a lot of different constraints on it. And unfortunately, the county, right at the beginning or just before the pandemic, chose to move the CDC into the health department. And they had no housing, no housing experts as leadership of the department. And then the pandemic hit. And so the health department was tasked with managing a very wide policy agenda. And we've had some issues with even getting accurate information with regards to the rules about the funding and how it has to be allocated. So I'm sorry, I hope that answered your question. But yes, they do get money. Some of it's for us, some of it's other jurisdictions and some of it's their own.
Yeah, because this seems like yet another one of those. Yeah, because this seems like yet another one of those lovely unfunded mandates is what it feels like. My second question is, the wording of this report from the grand jury seems very, you will do this. What is their authority? What is the grand jury's authority? I, I know we've been asked to just give a response, but can they require that we do these recommendations? What, what can they do to us, if anything?
Yeah. Mr. Barker, do you have any response to that? This is my first experience with a grand jury directing something as a staff member. And so I actually do not.
Yeah. You're, you're required to respond. That's what the statute requires. They are, they are requiring the cities to do, the cities in the county to do other things that probably go beyond their, their authority.
All right. I just was curious, you know, is it, is we've responded and thank you staff, you, you know, done a great job, I think, preparing a response, but since a lot of the things we didn't agree with and, and we can't or won't be implementing, I just didn't know if they could come back and say, well, we told you you had to do this and we recommended it and you have to do it. But it sounds like our responsibility stops at responding. So thank you for that.
All right. Quick question for you. I don't see anything from Mr. Ford at this point in time, so I'll jump in. It mentions in their description of how the grand jury went about this, that they conducted interviews with key individuals in Sonoma County who were involved in the affordable housing arena, including county and city officials, nonprofit agencies and affording affordable housing agencies and advocates. I'm curious, did you know, did they contact us? Did they contact the housing land trust of Sonoma County? Or even Burbank Housing? I, I certainly have seen the response from the housing land trust in this, and I seem to remember a rather same somewhat outraged letter from Burbank Housing pointing out some of the assumptions that were put forward that evidently were pretty faulty. Did we get any request for information or to help them vet these findings that they made?
It's my understanding, and I'd ask Mr. Barker to correct me if I misspeak, that the, the inputs they got are confidential. But Mr. Barker, is that correct?
Sorry. Yes, I believe they, they, they can request that you be anonymous when they take witness testimony and, and they don't typically disclose it.
But you are correct, Mr. or Mayor Lamond, that there, there was a somewhat frustrated response from Burbank Housing and very pointed language in their letter.
Yeah, no, I have to say it seemed to. It's always fun as mayor, when you go get your mail and there's a letter to you from the grand jury and it's addressed to you and hasn't gone through staffers. So see, after 13 years, there still can be something new for you. Those are newer here in council. So there's more to look forward to. But I will say that I did seem, as I read it, there seemed to be a definite lean to it. Perhaps I'd go so far even to say very slight bias and I'll just go back to my old standby saying I said I'm shocked, absolutely shocked to see politics include itself into the grand jury. But it felt like there was a little of that, which is well and fine, but I was surprised from reading the material. It appeared to me that it was very off base, I guess, at best. So I'll just use a little of my statement while I'm asking this long-winded question and say, appreciate all the work staff put into this. When I looked at this and all the extra unplanned for unscheduled time that this being dropped in your inbox must have encountered. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness, the depth and the clarity of the responses you gave in response to their findings and requirements. And, and I'll just share with my colleagues, I would be happy to sign this as Mary as it is. So if anybody has anything to add after public comment, we'll talk about that then. But let's make the jump to public comments and see if anybody else wants to weigh in on the grand jury.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, dialing star, dial star nine. Mayor Lamond, that'll end public comment. Mayor Lamond, that will end public comment.
I see one attendee. I'm not seeing a hand going up. Would I be correct in assuming that we don't have?
Yeah, that'll end public comment. Thank you.
And thank you very much. All right, let's bring it back. So we're asked tonight to review this, provide any direction to staff regarding any memes or to the responses we may want to make. And then authorize the mayor to execute evidently first thing in the morning and deliver this to the, this response to the grand jury. So does anybody have anything they wish to add to this or any comment they need to make? Seeing none, I see a hand from the vice mayor. Please go ahead.
I'll, I'll make a comment and then I'm happy to make a motion for you. You know, I concur with you, you know, as usual, it seems like part of the picture is, you know, typically left out and, and there's a lot of discussion and talk about, you know, fees and, you know, all of that kind of stuff, but there's never really any talk about what we hear the most and that's, we entitle these things and we get that, well, it doesn't pencil out, it doesn't pencil out, but there's nothing in any of that that talks to that. There's a lot of talk in there about the, all of this financing that's available. Yet when we've approved these projects, we have had nothing but feedback from those developers coming back and saying that they can't get any of this financing. And, and I think it was really interesting. One, one of the comments in there said that, you know, oftentimes these developments, especially complete affordable only ones, you know, may have as many as nine financial pieces to put together the financing, which, you know, there's something really very wrong with this picture. If we really want to do affordable housing, that we have to break it up into nine pieces, you know, to make it happen. So anyways, that's my comment on that. And with that, I would move that we authorize the mayor to execute and deliver the city's responses to the grand jury.
I think we're good. I think we're just looking for direction tonight. So I don't need a motion, but I'm just going to look at the council. I'm not seeing any further hands. I'm not seeing any shaking heads. I, I believe we have direction to staff. We're good with it as it is and you're authorizing me to execute and the city to deliver this. I'm going to look a little more time for nodding heads. I'm seeing that. Staff, is there anything else you need for this tonight?
Thank you all for your patience with me. And I apologize again to the mayor for the last minute nature of this little.
No, not at all. And I thank you very much for your work on this. There were a couple of lines in there I liked very much in response to the interest in making all cities essentially the same to make dealing with rules regarding construction and development easier. It really seemed to get an essence of this community and how it may vary from other communities as, as all communities do. And I was appreciative of that. So thank you. Thank you for your work. All right. So that does complete our regular agenda. We'll jump now to our city managers' report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. So we are having another drug takeback event on October 29th. So we're still a little way from that. But the Katati Police Department is hosting this drug ticket back event Saturday, October 29th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the community center at 216 E school behind city hall. And this is our ongoing partnership with DEA to get unneeded medication out of our medicine cabinets and disposed of safely. So not flushed down the toilet or thrown in the garbage. We have a couple of public works projects that you're going to start to see some work out there in the field here very shortly. So the, the 2023 street preservation project, this is the thirty seal and street repair project slated for about 5.4 miles of streets to get repaired. That is scheduled to start on Thursday, September 15th with the crack seal and digouts. And then thirty seal would be scheduled at the end of the month, 26th, 27th, 28th. And updates will be posted on the, on the city website. There's the current projects process in process website, so our webpage. So if you go to that page, you can get the latest updates on the schedule for that or any other project. Notifications have gone out to residents and businesses, funding signs and changeable message signs are up. The West, tonight, the council approved the West Sierra sewer main replacement project. So we're going to move forward on that. To begin late October and extend into November. It will cause some potentially significant disruption of traffic during work hours. The project replaces the existing sewer in West Sierra Avenue from Olaf up to Terrace Drive, which if you don't know what that is, don't worry because that's not a public street. It's countryside mobile home park is to give you a point of reference. Now, the contractor has 55 working days from the notice of proceed to complete the work. So that's going to get underway right now too. And then on some, some events next Friday, September 23rd, we're hosting our first ever Katati car show along with our last movie in the park for the year. And this will be from five to seven p.m. We'll have an array of fuel cars behind La Plaza Park. Following the show, we're showing the movie cars, the Pixar movie cars and giant blow up screen in the park. And there'll be food from, food from Smacking Soul Food, coffee and little pop kettle corn available for purchase, but also people can bring their own picnic center to enjoy. And the movie, of course, is free for everyone to attend. As was mentioned earlier in this meeting, next week is Creek Week. From Saturday, September 17th to Saturday, September 24th. Everybody's encouraged to go on your own to clean up. We'll go into Santa Rosa on, on the creek trail. And there are trash cans available at Pocket Park in the corner of Commerce, as I mentioned. And we're asking, we're asking for people to register online on the city's recreation page as a courtesy to keep track of who and how much trash was collected during the event. And then on Friday, September 30th, we're hosting our next kid night, kids night out event, which is really kind of parents, parents night out. And this is at, going to be at the community center. We're hosting children ages five to 12 for the evening while their, while their parents or grownups can have a child free evening to run errands, go on a date or just relax. From five to nine p.m., we're also providing pizza dinner, games, crafts and a movie. And the cost is $40 per child and you can sign up online for that. We have a few more farmers, weeks of farmers market left this season and they'll run every, continue to run every Wednesday afternoon, 4:30 to 7:30 in La Plaza Park for the end of September. And then lastly, returning again this year will be our Katati Candyland Halloween trick or treat event throughout Katati. So we're partnering with local businesses to hand out candy on Halloween from two to five p.m. So this is the sort of pre Halloween for the little ones or for the older ones. They can get, get a running start at the candy collection before the sun goes down and they start doing trick or treating for real. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Let's see if we have any questions from anybody in the council. No, I think they're used to the abundance of information and I'm just saying thumbs up. So thank you, Mr. Obed. With that, we'll now jump to something related, city council member reports. And I'll ask my colleagues if they have any reports for us tonight. All right. I see him from council member Ford and then from Vice Mayor Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor Lamond. So I'll just report briefly on the Russian River Watershed Association Board Meeting on a few weeks ago, August 25th, I think. We had a report on the Potter Valley project and the current status of that, which is a big deal for the watershed, especially for the upper river Mendocino County and, and Personoma County. That is in the midst of a very long process that, that will determine whether the diversion from the Eagle River continues into the Russian River watershed. That source of water is critical to the upper half of the watershed. So PG&E has started the process of abandoning the process and, and it was because of the power generation that they, they had the legal right to divert the water. So maintaining that diversion in, in a way that preserves both watersheds and fisheries is a big challenge that will require lots of work across multiple counties for years to come. But there's of course a lot of angst about that. And what's going to happen to it. But the, the power plant is clearly done and it's just about the water from here on out. So that was the, the biggest item on the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. Remembering many years to discussing that at the RW, that was indeed a big item. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, Ben, and I think it will. I agree with you. It'll be a big item for many years to come. They tried really hard to, to work that out. But yeah, it's just, I think, more than anybody can really handle and the costs are just astronomical to even consider that. So I'd like to report on the League of California Cities Conference. It was a hot one down there. It was really very warm. But a, a couple of the highlights, I went to a session that was really interesting. Not as applicable to us because we're not a charter city, we're a general law city. But some cities have done some really interesting things from equity perspective. They have actually put people to work in farms and then farming the food and giving them jobs. And, and the law enforcement helps with that. They've done soccer teams and boxing, built boxing facilities. So it was really an interesting approach to really putting people to work and abuse to kind of keep that circle going. Not sure, you know, how much of it we could do, but it were really interesting considerations for that. Another one that I went to was interesting and that was about the on-street dining risks. And they had some really good information that I think will be helpful for us as we move forward with more of a permanent solution on that. Others are, are working on, on that right now. I will say that the things that our city has implemented thus far are really some of the safest in California. So a lot of the other cities did not take the safety aspects as much as we did. So thank you, staff, for that. I, I want to tell you how blessed I feel to live in the community that we live in, that we can talk civilly to one another and that we don't have some of the situations that I heard about in some of the cities. Some of the destruction of people's property of council members and city staff and some of the threats that have been made. I just feel, you know, so blessed that we live in such a wonderful community that we can, you know, disagree, but we don't take things to those extremes because it was pretty scary. Some of the things that I heard from some of the other cities. I was tapped to sit on the general resolutions committee where an item was brought forward. It was petitioned during the first couple of days. And it was to bring a resolution forward to put a ballot initiative on. But the group that was doing it, they were asking people to sign their petition and they couched it as, well, you want local control in your, in your housing, don't you? Well, if you want local control, then sign this. Well, it turned out that there's a group that's trying to put together initiative to change the state constitution to keep some of the local control. You know, doing a state constitution change is a really big deal. And they didn't even have final language. They were asking for help from the League of California Cities to come up with the language and to help with resources and work with some law firm to move that forward. So needless to say, there was a couple of hours worth of discussion on it and it went back and forth. And ultimately, the resolutions committee sent it back to be looked at by the Housing and Community Development Policy Committee. Because, you know, it just really wasn't ready for the whole general assembly to vote on it. And then at the meeting of the general assembly, we also accepted that there were some folks that tried to have it debated and moved, but that we had to actually do a hand vote. And it was put forward not to debate it and to go ahead and, and follow the recommendation of the general resolution committee to send it back for, for more work. So we may be seeing that again. Their, their attempt is to get it on the 2024 ballot, but we'll see where that goes. And that is all I have to. And that is all I have to report. Unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Harvey? It sounds like a rather exciting time. Yeah, I'm not surprised at the response. It's unfortunate, we're in a position where everything is this unbalanced, that it creates these sorts of responses and needs for responses back and forth. Hopefully, that will resolve to something that works better and represents all of our concerns. I do have one thing to share tonight. Hopefully, a little more cheerful, at least than that, from this Monday at the Regional Climate Protection Authority. We did discuss our greenhouse gas inventories. And this is something we do every few years, it backcasts to 1990. And as some of you may remember, we had a goal for 2020 of hitting a 25% reduction below 1990 levels. And this sticks in my mind a bit, because I remember sitting in council meeting, reporting on this very early, I might have been an alternate or my first year or two as a representative up there. And here, getting some feedback from some in the audience essentially saying, good luck. And that was because at that time, we were nowhere near where we'd need to be to be able to make that number by 10 years. And we're already about a third of the way there. Well, to cut to the chase, we did not hit 25%, but we hit 22.9%. Mr. Ford, you're a mathematician, you may be comfortable rounding up to 20, 23%. Frankly, I'm pleased enough, I'll call it 25, but either way, I think is a win and a good thing. Obviously, there's a lot more work and concerns. I did want to point out that it is in the report that you can read in the packet, which is actually very interesting, that one of the biggest things that drove this change in numbers was emissions from energy used in buildings decreased 9.9, again, let's call it 10%, between 2018 and 22, or 49% essentially between 1990 and 2020. And that reduction is primarily attributed to Sonoma Clean Power coming online and inducting most of the people in the county into a remarkably cleaner power mix, which reduced emissions roughly a little under 50%. And sure enough, if you look at our emission, current emissions for our regular entry-level power package for Sonoma Clean Power, Clean Start, it is 49%. So, it's interesting, I point that out just to point out the difference that the type of power you use can make in terms of emissions and how powerful it is. And just to suggest that there's more left on the table. This city, as well as many of the people probably on this council, and certainly on the Sonoma Clean Power Board, choose to step up for a slight extra fee to Evergreen, which is 100% renewable. So, if you look at the size of that reduction, we could do that again and add to that. If you do, as this city's doing with our move to, to moving to EVs with our new police car and the rest of our fleet, pushing that adoption, if that sort of increase is powered by a power source, for example, like Evergreen, you could, you could attack very strongly the largest remaining emissions sector we have, which is transportation. So, there's just a direction in the future would be a very good direction for us to continue to lean and push. And I can think you can see a very nascent step up this Thursday, when we actually unveil our police car, our new police car. Because that's the point of it, the police car by itself is just a police car, it's just one EV. But if the whole city starts moving to that, if we challenge our friends, a friendly challenge to our colleagues in other cities, you need to electrify your fleets too. Come on, don't let little Cattani do this first, join us. That's something. What if counties around us, such as Marin and Mendocino notice, oh, look what Sonoma's done, we could do this. And then how does that move the public? These things are all little steps that all of a sudden can get larger momentum, I think. So, I was happy to share that report, I thought it was good news. It proves that sometimes if we're just willing to work a little outside the box, we actually can make big steps in things where we think we might not be able to. So, with that, that ends my report. So, if we have nothing further, that concludes city council member reports and brings us to public comment on non-action agenda items. And we do have an attendee still. So, I will see if we have any comment on non-public action items.
To our, to our attendees tonight, please use the raised hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Lammon, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right, I'll go to the city manager next Friday, 16, and ask if we have any information received after the agenda was posted?
No, Mayor, nothing received.
All right, with that then, let's see. Without any objection, we are adjourned at 8:32. Thank you, everybody, for your discussion, I look forward to seeing you next time. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Mayor Lammon.
All right, well, I'll bring this back and just, since we have two new attendees, again, I'm struggling with that title, Mr. Barker is right. Council members in the audience, I'll point out, historically, for years, this has been something that generally the mayor gets to do to go to this annual conference. But the practice for many years here, at least the few times I've been mayor and many of our other mayors is, we've generally asked and had the support of Vice Mayor Harvey to represent us because of her strong participation in Cal cities over the years. That is the case this time, she's now the North Bay Division President, and she's going to be there. I understand the rules do allow an alternate to be a staff member if necessary. And amazingly enough, we have our vice mayor and our city manager are going to be there. You could see perhaps where this is going. So, so with that, I, I am happy once again to have councilman, Vice Mayor Harvey.